I'd also love to see cops on segways. I don't know how we pay for the segways, but I'd love to see that. I know they do in DC. If we expanded the tax base, we may have the money for that.
Speaking of Segway.[10.46][10.46](laughter) To wrap it up. Okay. All right. I think we've tortured these people long enough. And for those of you at home watching, you're officially a wonk for lasting this long. And I think I'd just like to say thank you to all the candidates, all the candidates, and good luck to all of you.[32.01][32.01](applause) These people, I do admire these people quite a bit because they're making a big effort in their lives, taking a big chunk out of their lives to run for office and/or to serve. So, yeah. And I'd like to also thank the city staff, City Clerk Jesse Carpenter, Video Production Manager Alvaro Calabia.
Okay. And I want to remind everybody that if you go to Tacoma.com, we have a page set up where you can find links to all of the candidates and you can learn more about their positions by following it to their websites. I know that a lot of people submitted questions. We tried to ask as many as we could, and obviously, you know, time doesn't permit for us to get to all of them. We will do our best to get these questions to candidates before the election and get them posted on our website so that if we did not get to your question tonight, in the next week or so, you'll be able to find it at Tacoma.com.
All right.
Tacoma Park City Council ordered for the clerk please call the role.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mael.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Phelps.
We don't have any changes to the agenda this evening. Couple of quick notes on upcoming dates. Next Monday, November 2nd, we won't meet. That's the night before the election. Tuesday, November 3rd is the official election day. Polls open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Early voting is going on as we speak. Wednesday, November 4th, the council will meet to receive certification of the election results at 7:30 in this room. The last full meeting of this council will take place on Monday, November 9th. Wednesday, November 11th is Veterans Day and city offices will be closed. And then Monday, November 16th is the old, last meeting of the old council slash first meeting of the new council with swearing in of new council members. And that'll be followed by a reception in the atrium lobby. And for the record, I issued a proclamation recognizing pulmonary hypertension awareness month. And we will next move to public comments on voting items. We have five voting items this evening. I'll take those in order. And the first one is the second reading ordinance regarding council compensation. Is there any public comment on that? Second reading ordinance. Seeing none, I'll move to the item number two, which is a resolution endorsing FY17 Community Development Block Grant Awards. Anybody wish to testify on that one? Seeing none, I'll move to item number-
Wait, wait. Mayor.
(inaudible).
You CDPJ?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Blunt submitted, well, if we were, um, committed with the submitted grant-
Yeah, you want to identify yourself for the-
I'm sorry, Mary Jamie Chewey, Ward 2.
Thanks.
I spoke to my councilwoman, who's not here today, about it, and he said something about possibly there might be something where we would not get all we asked for. And, but, we would get, ask eight people instead of the four we asked, but they wouldn't get full scholarships, they would just get partial scholarships. I know there was some kind of collaboration between Jared Signer of Spirit Club, who's giving the class Wednesday nights here currently, and he spoke with Linda Walker. And I don't see her today. She said she would speak with you all. Did she about it?
Before the meeting.
Before the meeting, I think she said she'd speak with you all about this. And I'm just here to ask, please, consider us seriously. There, you're welcome any Wednesday night at 6:30, 7:30, we're here. And there are currently four Tacoma Park residents going there. One person who is just two stores down from Tacoma Park, I don't know if you'd consider her, but that would make five if you considered her so far. And I'm, I'm almost certain, I cannot ever say anything for 100% certain, but, but we probably could get eight people, especially with a scholarship. That, that's a big problem with these, with people with, who are severe disabilities. And thank you, and I apologize. Last time I was here, I lost my temper, but I will, from now on, I will say you were misinformed, okay? Instead of saying you lied, I will say you were misinformed because that did happen. And thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify on the resolution endorsing FY17 Community Development Block Grant Awards? Seeing none, we'll take any public testimony on item number three, which is the first reading ordinance authorizing execution of a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for Hillwood Manor at 1100 Linden Avenue. Seeing none, we'll move to comments on item number four, which is a first reading ordinance authorizing installation of traffic coming in 600 block of Boston Avenue. Anybody wish to testify on that? Seeing none, we'll move to the last voting item, which is a first reading ordinance amending Chapter 11.2 Snow and Ice Regulation. Anybody want to testify on that?
I just don't like the unfairness.
If you can wait till you get to the microphone.
Sorry. I just don't like the unfairness. I know you have snow angels, and I appreciate that, but I don't like the fact that on my street and probably everywhere is, where you're, there's sidewalks, you can get fined and you're responsible for keeping it at all times, not just the winter. Keep it free of debris and safe, but yet the people in my block or the next block over and other people have, can have huge bushes and trees covering the area, and you can't walk past their house at all, some of them. I mean, it's taller than me, these bushes and trees, young trees. And why, why? It's just not, not fair to me, okay?
Thanks.
I mean, I still plan to clean mine, but still. Thank you.
Any other testimony on that? First reading ordinance? Okay. Thank you. We'll now move to public comments on items in general, which would be our work session item on the library renovation proposal and anything not on our agenda.
Enid Hodus. I live at 7418 Hancock Avenue in Ward 3. I don't know if there's going to be a presentation from the architect, but I have looked at the plans at the library for the renovation of the library. And as a heavy user of the library and also sort of representing readers in general in Tacoma Park, especially adult readers, I feel as though the, the new plans for the renovation really ignore the need for shelf space for books. And in fact, it seems as though there's going to be fewer books and, and less shelf space for books, especially adult books, in the renovated library. And the renovated library is supposed to have more square footage, more kinds of things, you know, that, that will be better for the residents of the city. But I just find it unacceptable that they just are restricting the space for books. And I, I don't think it's fair, and I think they should make an adjustment. They should either expand it or find some other place within the re-formatted library, renovated library to have books. I mean, I don't know what they expect the library to do with the books that they now have. If they expect to sell them all or give them away or what? At any rate, if the person who's giving the presentation on the renovation of the library had, and I could address that, it would be very helpful. But I just want to stick up for the readers of Tacoma Park.
Thanks for your comments, and we'll make sure that question is addressed. Anybody else wish to comment?
I am Elizabeth Wallace, Ward 1. I recently took a ride along on, with one of the officers in Tacoma Park and learned a lot about the New Hampshire Avenue area. And I know that we've spoken a lot in the last few meetings about the Taco Bell, but I think what requires a lot more of our attention is the Quality Inn because there are so many arrests and criminal activity that's being handled there. They pay $40,000 in property taxes to Tacoma Park every year. A police officer's salary is 80. I kind of wonder if they are using an undue amount of the percentage of their property taxes in use of our police force. It's just a question that I was thinking about today. And I hope that the next city council will kind of look at that property with much more concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you all. We'll now move to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
I just want to let people know that I will miss next Wednesday's vote certification meeting. I have a business trip. That's all. I just wanted to let people know that in advance.
Councilmember Schultz.
Several thanks to Mr. Hodus, speaking about the library. I want you to know that I am an ardent supporter of the library and a lover of books, and my wife dwarfs my love of books because she goes down there almost every day. Not really, just since she goes down there with truckloads of books and brings back truckloads of books. And I know that there are many, many people who, who revere, love our, our, our library, even though it's kind of a unique, it is unique in the state of Maryland, as, as we all know. And there's been many comments where we don't really need, need the library, you know, from some people because we have the new Silver Spring Library. I don't buy that at all. I think they're two separate institutions. Just, just for the record, I'm saying that. With regard, Elizabeth Wallace, with regard to the Quality Inn, you're talking, you're touching on something that's in my ward, on New Hampshire Avenue, as you know. The Quality Inn and the adjacent Econo Lodge, which are both owned and managed by Choice Hotels, is the hottest criminal hotspot in the city of Tacoma Park and has been that way for many years. It has been a great worry to me. The fact is, is that the police do such an outstanding job of monitoring that, those areas, is that residents who live near it almost never hear about any of the crime that occurs there, which is a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing because the police are doing their job and they're protecting residents and other commercial businesses nearby, as they are supposed to do in their role of policing. But on the other hand, it absorbs a lot of our time and, and it has a huge number of Part II crimes, including drug, drug dealing, drug pushing, prostitution, and a long, long, long list of other Part II crimes that just makes your head swim. And so it, my goal, and I think I can say that most of us up here, if not all of us, our goal is to figure out a way to have hotel space that's needed in, in our city that, that is not like that, but that, that is something that, that isn't going to be tempting as this one is to, to, to the criminal element, but something instead that would be a really nice lodging property, that would be a landmark to the city and a welcome place for, for people to stay. If you ever want to amuse yourself sometime, go on TripAdvisor and look up those two hotels, and you will, you won't know whether to laugh or to cry. The other thing I really wanted to talk about was the, spent three days this past week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday at the annual Fall MML Conference. There was two things that I attended that I thought were absolutely outstanding. One was pretty much of an all-afternoon special workshop on community policing that was held, actually, in the Cambridge, City of Cambridge Public Safety Building. And there was three panels that held forth, talking, the first, the first panel talked about the whole idea of how community policing, the sheer def, mere definition of it, is changing across the United States, particularly since Ferguson, and how that's affecting recruiting and training. The second one had to deal, was a great deal of information devoted to body cameras, body worn cameras. And the, everybody on that panel agreed that they are a valuable asset, but they're not a panacea, and they can, there's a lot of issues that have to be worked out. And that's not something we have not already heard from our own chief, who's very, seems to be very sensitive to, to this, because some, some people think that this is going to be the solution to solving all crime forever. And, um, so I had to leave before that, that, that workshop was over with, but the workshop was chaired by an associate judge, former mayor of Bel Air, and a member of the insurance trust that we all belong to, as well as currently now a judge on the Hartford County Court. So, he brought a very interesting perspective, being an attorney himself, who's risen to the level of judge, and he moderated that whole session. And I thought it was extraordinarily informative. I certainly got a lot out of it. Because, and I wanted to attend it because we are getting ready to undertake a, a study that, that Councilmember Stewart has been long advocating on how to do a better job of, of defining and, and implementing community policing. And I think this began to shed some light on, on the whole subject for me. And the other thing that I attended that I thought was terrifically outstanding was a, a workshop on vacant blighted housing. Now, mind you, the MML is a statewide organization, but in listening to this, I find, we, we, we see that this, the problem of vacant blighted housing affects many, many municipalities, down to the littlest ones up to the big ones like Frederick and Annapolis and, and every, all of them in between. The problem is different in each city, and different solutions need, need to be addressed. But, and it's a very complicated pro, set of, or presents a very complicated set of legal issues on how, how the, what, what cities can do. And there was a lot of interesting discussions about solutions that are being worked on. I learned a great deal from it, and I thought it was, by itself, that workshop was worth my whole time at this, at this conference. So I hope to be able to make use of that information. And I really appreciate the opportunity to, to have been at this conference. That's all I wanted to say tonight.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to echo my colleague, Councilmember Schultz, and I also attended with Mayor Williams and Mayor, Councilmember Siemens, the Fall MML Conference. There was a workshop hosted by our own Mayor Williams on big cities that was very informative. And one piece that I would like staff to follow up is whether or not Tacoma Park is eligible to, the comptroller, I guess, has some type of regulation that says that cities can charge Uber and Lyft if they are, you know, using their streets. Since highway user revenue is, is very important, the state has not given us the total amount of money that we used to get a number of years ago before the financial collapse, I think it would be important if we could regulate and put some type of fee, a modest fee, and I think it's only like 25 cents on users of Uber. So, that's one thing. And the other thing is I want to remind residents that on October 31st, I'm co-hosting a cookout with Councilmember Stewart at Slago Creek Park. It's going, the cookout will start at 11:00 AM. This is to celebrate early voting. This is the first time we've had an early voting location in the center of Ward 5. I would like to welcome my colleagues, Councilmember Schultz, Councilmember Siemens, and Mayor Williams, if you would like to attend.
And when does that conclude?
Concludes at 4:00 PM. And Mayor Grimes, or Councilmember Grimes, if you would like to come by, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. I also had one item from the Maryland Municipal Legislative Conference that I wanted to comment on. Something was brought up at the Legislative Committee that I then broached that subject to the large cities representatives who were in that large cities forum that I moderated, and it concerned medical marijuana, since we had a discussion of that last week. One of the concerns that we had here was about where those potential dispensaries would be located and how that, how that would fit with the zoning, particularly in certain commercial areas, and whether there would be restrictions. And it was interesting to hear that there's strong interest among some members of the legislature, particularly Senator Bobby Zirkin, who's chair of the Judicial Proceedings Committee, and that he wants to basically make it clear that the state is the entity that will be kind of having influence over where these go. And so, he, it was noted that he intends to put in a bill in the upcoming legislative session designating that marijuana dispensaries would be treated zoning-wise just as pharmacies are. And that was, I thought it was a disturbing aspect of this whole thing. If that comes to pass, I'm not sure that he will be able to get that through, since zoning is a local prerogative, but I'm not sure what the state could do that would determine that. Some people felt that it wouldn't happen, but I think it's something that people need to follow. And the fact that he is going to submit that was confirmed by one of our District 20 delegates last night, who I was talking with at an event. And then just one other thing that I wanted to note, separate from that, is that I had the opportunity to participate in the Institute for Regional Excellence graduation ceremony last Friday night. City manager Suzanne Ledlow was there, along with me, and it was a chance to recognize one of our employees who graduated from that program, Lou McAllister, from the Recreation Department. And I was very happy to see that he graduated. We've generally had, not every year, but usually every, most years, we've had a graduate of that program, and the city manager is one of those graduates, an early graduate of that program. And it was my, my last chance to help present at that graduation. I've, I've been the only chair of the board of that organization since its inception, and it was very nice to be recognized for my-
Did they give you a nice black van?
They did.
With some very nice words.
So it was nice that I had the opportunity to attend again, and particularly to hand, hand the certificate to our employee. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. As has been noted, I was at the MML Conference this week also, and I think everyone has shared some highlights. I thought that one of the, the best programs that was presented was in regard to applying for grants. They had a very good group of panelists and offered some great advice, and I look forward to working with the city manager on how we can reach out and seek more grants. Thank you.
You going to tell us what they said was the biggest revenue source?
They didn't say it was the biggest revenue source, but they said that a big revenue source that has surprised everyone was fountains, that-
That's right.
People like to throw their money into fountains, and it was shocking to hear some of the amounts of money that some of the municipalities were digging out of these fountains.
So I guess we need a fountain.
So look for Roscoe to have a fountain.[1737.01][1737.01](laughter)
That must have it.
All right. We'll get one, for sure.
All right. Thank you all. I think that takes care of council comments. We'll move along to city managers' comments.
Thank you. I did pass out my city manager comments. I left off one item, which is just-
We are promoting people using our beta site of the new website. It's beta.tacoma park M D dot gov, and we encourage people to go on there and make comments. We're reviewing comments and making changes or responding to them as they come in. As part of the, as part of my comments, I answered a couple brief questions on the Commemoration Commission, that we're still, we're kind of, don't see major expenses related to upkeep of benches and that kind of thing, but as we find out more information about kind of how many and- kind of how many and what kinds of things, we may be able to calculate an amount. As I suspected, on Councilmember Schultz, you had asked about how many RCN subscribers, and it's proprietary information. They don't share that. I'm sure that each of the companies knows, but they--
Oh, I'm sure they do.
They don't say it out loud.
I know I'm one of them.
Right.
Thank you.
There we go. I do have quite a lot of background information on medical cannabis attached to my comments, and they'll be posted on the website. I will say that staff did remarkable amounts of collection and reading of information, particularly on how other jurisdictions look at locations citing medical cannabis dispensaries. I think the thing that's remarkable in reviewing all of this is that there's very few jurisdictions that have very many controls on them. Other items I wanted to report, early voting is going well. Yesterday, we had 76 voters. As of 5:30 today, we had 52, so I'm sure we have more by now. Tomorrow, there will be an active shooter exercise at Washington Adventist Hospital at the Listener Building. It'll go from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon, and people should not be alarmed by the fact that there will be more emergency vehicles there than normal. I'd like to encourage people to go online and fill out the parking survey. It's going to be up, available through Saturday. You can just go to the website and go under parking. We will be following up on this, identifying some special areas where we'll do more intensive asking of questions, focus groups, some other kind of activities. And then I think it's in about January, we will have the consultants that come through the Council of Governments looking at some specific areas, especially in the Old Town area. This Saturday is Monster Bash. Also on our website is information related to street closures and ride-on bus and metro bus rerouting. Please check that out. And the Monster Bash starts at 1:00. Come dressed in your costumes. And I'm also just reminding people of the Diwali Festival. I think it's Diwali, right? Is that?
I think it's Diwali.
Diwali? Diwali?
You can say Diwali.
Okay. Whichever it is. On Sunday, November 8th, from 2:00 to 7:00 on New Hampshire Avenue, at 7505 New Hampshire Avenue in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads area. And I'm promoting it because it's a real different event, and it probably will be an annual event from now on, but people have their list of annual events in Tacoma Park, and this could be added to it. That's all.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. We don't have any minutes to adopt, so we'll move to our regular meeting voting items. First one up is the second reading ordinance regarding council compensation. Somebody would like to move the ordinance?
Move it.
Go here a second. Don't all speak at once.
Second.
Yep.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Grimes, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any discussion? This is, this basically follows the Compensation Committee recommendations, keeps current salary and benefit structure, recommends automatic annual updates, and adds the council availability to the Independent Care Flexible Spending Account Plan. Councilmember Schultz.
As I indicated at first reading of this ordinance, I'm voting against this resolution, not because I have any negative comments about the work of the committee that prepared this, but because, because they did, they did an excellent job, but because I believe that council compensation needs to be taken, we need to look at it in a different way than this commission was able to look at it, with thinking in terms of how we can possibly attract more candidates to participate in our city elections. And I won't elaborate on that, because I did that already last, at the last, at the time we had first, first reading on it. I think that there's an issue here that needs to be further explored. Obviously, it's going to pass this time, but between, between now and the next time this commission comes together and we consider this, I think we need to take a serious look at ways in which we can get better participation in our elections, which will help, of course, drive voters to the polls. So that's, that's where I'm going to come out on this.
Other comments? Just a reminder that the committee followed the principles of compensation that are articulated in the city code. Okay, this is a second reading ordinance, so we'll quickly call the rule.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Nay.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mail.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Aye. So that carries six to one. Next item is Agenda Item Number Two, which is a resolution endorsing FY17 Community Development Block Grant Awards. Does somebody want to present this? Ms. Walker.
Good evening. I'm here for Sarah Daines this evening, Lynda Walker. And before you, you have the draft resolution for the Community Development Block Grant Program for FY17. And in follow-up to your discussion at the work session, there were some concerns expressed about the number of people that would be served under the village program. So I did contact Wolfgang Mergner and Mary Jane Machui, as well as the Executive Director of the Spirit Club, which is the organization that the village is partnering with. And they did affirm that, that when they work with the spirit, the village organization, they could enlist up to four additional participants in the program. This would mean, though, that the four families that they had put into their grant, they might have to pay for some of their own tuition, but they could add four more to the fitness program that they intend to have with the, with the village plan. In regard to the question about additional funding, Karen Marocho did do some research, and there are some small grant opportunities available for a program like this through the Maryland Development Disabilities Council, the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. There is an organization called the Ark of Montgomery County, the Weinberg Foundation, and as well as our own Tacoma Park Community Grants Program. And as well, the Spirit Club also offers small stipends to participants who, who are income-eligible for this program. So the Village of Tacoma Park was added to the draft resolution as a recipient with a grant request of $4,860, while Cheer's grant was reduced by that same amount. And if you have any questions regarding the village program, both Wolfgang and Mary Jane are here this evening.
And I just want to make sure that we cover the, what I remember is the potential questions on the, kind of the scaling up or down of these programs, that the Cheer amount, that they were going to be able to do it with that amount, and that the, the village program, that it could, you covered kind of scaling up, and then also a question of whether there was any, any problem with scaling down if there were fewer than the number that they were anticipating.
Right. So, I mean, the, the tuition is a set price for each participant in terms of the village program. So if they scaled up to include additional participants, they probably would need to get additional funding from other sources.
And if they scaled down, they would still run the program with fewer participants?
Yes.
That's right.
Correct. They currently have, you know, a number of participants already in the program, so the four families that would be getting this would just join that program.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate the work that's been put into this, especially in the last few days to try to address the need to include the Village of Tacoma Park in this grant. But I'm very concerned at the reductions that we've seen in the Cheer project. They have done some excellent work, and we've already reduced the funding to them in recent times, yet they continue to have the Health Enterprise Zone, and they've been very active in the youth collaborative. They're also doing some excellent work with, in Ward Five, with the capacity building at a problem apartment building there. And I know they've been active in Ward Four, reaching out and trying to really encourage community involvement from some of the underrepresented residents in Ward Four. And I'm disappointed to see the reduction of the amount that we're providing to Cheer, and I would like to suggest that off of this cover sheet that we, that we reduce the Educare Support Services by 2,000 and increase Cheer by 2,000. So that would make Cheer at 5,240.
So you want to make that a--
I'll make that a motion.
Let's see. Did we?
I don't think anybody--
We haven't moved yet, so--
Okay, I'll move it with that change.
Okay. Let's, tell you what--
If you're going to call a vote on that, I'm going to have to vote differently than the vote otherwise.
So I want, I want to, I want to take that separately as amendment. So let's, let's put it on the table, and then we'll take that as an amendment.
Okay.
So you want to move it as, as it is on the blue sheet?
Pretty stupid to move it.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Grimes, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Now it's on the table now. Councilmember--
I would like to move my change as previously described.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Discussion of the amendment. Councilmember Mail.
First, thank you to city staff for the work, additional work on the Village of Tacoma Park proposal, and to residents who are involved in that effort. I appreciate seeing the funding amount in the, in the agenda packet. I am supportive of Councilmember Siemens' proposal to move 2,000 from Educare into Cheer. I would still ask us to continue to, to spend time to work with Cheer, to continue to develop a better understanding of the outcomes from this grant and other grants that we make to Cheer, have staff be able to come back to us and help describe some of the deliverables. And I very much appreciate that Cheer comes and speaks to us, but it'd be great to have a bit more staff follow up in terms of, you know, effective use of all of our grant programs. But I'm happy to support Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Siemens' motion and second.
And I want to check with both Councilmember Grimes and Councilmember Smith to see if you had comments on the amendment. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. My position remains what it has been in the sessions that we've discussed this and voted on, sorry, that we've discussed this, I think, twice before, which is that I favor the committee's recommendations as submitted to the council. I prefer not to make alterations in the committee's work out of respect for that, which I trust, and against the idea of politicizing the, the grants wherever possible. So for that reason, I disfavor and oppose the amendment.
Councilmember Smith, did you have comments on the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support the amendment because I would like to see money giving to Cheer to forward their progress in capacity building in Ward Five. But my concern is I don't understand why city staff didn't talk to the county's Health and Human Services Department to have them pay for the Village of Tacoma Park, because Director Uma Alaway contacted me and said that she was more than willing to discuss coming up with the $4,860. So I don't understand why staff could not have followed up and found a way for the county to pay for this, and then we wouldn't have had to make any changes.
I guess I'm a little bit surprised by that. I mean, we certainly identified them as, as a source, but it's not something that we usually go out and try to, on, on an opportunity like this, to, to just go and find money for the various entities that have put in through this program.
I would just say, next time, if it's something regarding Health and Human Services, that we follow up with them, since I do have a relationship with the director, and see if they would be willing to take money out of their budget to cover some of these programs. Thank you.
And if I can just note on that point that the timing of those two different sources of money could be different, since the CDBG FY17 money would be made available in--
Is that in October it starts?
July of 2017. This particular--
Yes.
Yeah. July of 2017.
So, so that what we're talking about here with the CDBG money is more than a year and a half, year and a half in the future, and the county money could potentially be current year money? Okay. Councilmember Stewart, and then Councilmember Schultz.
I just wanted to voice my support for Councilmember Siemens' amendment.
You can make a comment. I'm not sure your mic is on. Mic's not working.
I just support it, the amendment.
Okay. If you get going too fast with changing, you're changing and they're changing, and it keeps negating. Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
I just wanted to ask, Ms. Walker, the attachment to this document that we're looking at is labeled "special consideration," and summarizes for our benefit the total amounts of money that we've given to Cheer and to Educare Support Services since fiscal year 10, which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven fiscal years. That's this piece of paper.
Right. Right.
And together, we've given 90, over $92,000 to Educare, over $135,000 to Cheer cumulatively, so far, not counting what we're talking about tonight. So I guess I'm confused because, here's the question, is that we're talking about the possibility here, the proposal is $3,500 to Educare, but then here it indicates in FY16, which is the current year, we were, we are giving Educare almost $24,000, and the year before that, $18,000, and the year before that, $40,000. So are we talking about the same pots of money here?
These are accumulation from the community grants, Tacoma Park community grants, as well as the CDBG money.
So this is a combined sources of money, whereas what we're talking about here is pure, right, tonight, is purely CDBG money.
It is, except I think that there's also money in there that's been budgeted by, by the council for these particular programs.
Not for 17, which is what the CDBG money is.
Right, not for 17.
Right. No, not for 17.
The information that's in this special consideration was requested by council at the last meeting.
Yeah. So I, I think it's helpful for me to understand that the decisions we're making here towards Cheer and Educare isn't the only sources of money that we may be providing to each of these two organizations. to each of these two organizations in the coming months, much less the coming even to...
Correct.
Right.
'18 months.
Right, like for Tacoma Park, the food pantry, Educare is getting currently $23,000, and that, I believe, is a community grant program.
Right, okay.
And that will be used up by June 30th of 2017.
All right, okay, so that helps me understand. I think I can support Mr. Siemens' amendment.
Interesting that we look at the same figures and take different conclusions from them. Because I was looking at the special consideration figures and thinking, well, gee, that's $135,000 over the past seven years for Cheer. And I was, I want to agree with Councilmember Grimes that I would vote to go with the projects as laid out on the blue sheet. So I think that's all of the discussion on the amendment, so I'll take a hand in the air vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to make the shift? There's one, two, three, four, five, and opposed. So the amendment passes five to two. We're now back to the resolution as amended. Other comments? Let me just make my notes here. Okay, seeing no further discussion, this is a resolution. All those in favor of the resolution as amended, please say aye.
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 I didn't hear, I didn't hear four ayes, so let's have hands in the air on this one. Okay, and those opposed. Five to two, same as the amendment. Thank you. Next item is Agenda Item Number Three, and this is first reading ordinance authorizing execution of a pending move of taxes for Hillwood Manor at 1100 Linden Avenue. Ms. Walker, you're going to do this one as well?
Yep, just a short summary at the work session. Artie Harris from Montgomery Housing Partnership was here to explain their plan to acquire Hillwood Manor, located in Ward Six in early December. He explained the nature of the project and the plans for financing, as well as, you know, eventual renovation of the property within two to five years. So he's here tonight if you have any additional questions for him.
Okay, thanks. Questions or comments?
There was one piece of information that was requested of staff from Councilmember Mail about what is the way that the county's voluntary rent guidelines, how are they computed? It's the rental component of the CPIU for the D.C. metro area. And so that information was shared with council, as well as a chart that shows how it doesn't compare to the city's rent amounts each year. They're somewhat close, but sometimes they're higher and sometimes they're lower.
And over time, they kind of balance out.
I'd have to really run a list on that, but...
Okay.
But it is something that's not a subjective decision each year by the county. It's just a standard item from the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
But it's voluntary to adhere to it as opposed to mandatory?
That's correct. That's what's presented to the county as a whole.
Now, I'm not sure I understand your question. Voluntary by whom?
So the county has a system that defines the rent allowable or the desired rent increases per year?
That's right.
But buildings choose whether they follow that guideline or not?
That's right.
As opposed to Tacoma Park where you don't have a choice?
Yeah, that's right.
I will say, for MHP, we signed its call agreement not to compete where we specifically say that we will follow, we will follow the county's voluntary rent guidelines.
And is there a term on that agreement? For five years, 10 years?
Yeah, this is, it will run the same as yours. Every time we get finance, anytime we do a deal with the county, it's for the length. And when we go to permanent financing, that'll be a 30-year term, a 40-year term. So it'll be, we follow it for the term of this agreement, and then when we put permanent financing on it, we'll follow it for the term of permanent financing, which is a long-term commitment.
Which is usually in the 30 to 40 years.
Thirty to 40 years.
Thanks. Other questions? Okay, does somebody want to move this ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Smith. Any further discussion? Yes?
Just very briefly support the proposal, but I note that I would favor us having a policy discussion at some point to decide a goal or a target for pilots or for this kind of property tax abatement and just to set a goal. I personally favor something like, you know, 1% of city budget, $250,000 a year or $200,000 a year as a goal, but welcome that conversation in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I have no objection to Councilmember Mail's proposal at all. I just want to express, since this is in my ward, my sincere gladness that we're able to do this and that MHP is in a position to buy this property. And just that it's a very exciting thing because this is a very old property that deserves to be rehabilitated, and some of the tenants have lived there for a really long time, have waited forever practically to have these improvements made. So it is a great accomplishment in the realm of preserving affordable housing in the city, which all of us can be proud.
Councilmember Smith.
I would just like to say, I want to thank MHP for all of their work in Tacoma Park. I think for rent stabilization and providing affordable housing, in a future conversation, we need to decide if their mission is the way to go, and we can reach out to some of these other large landlords and possibly have MHP, CPDC work with them to take over these buildings, because the issues with Hillwood Manor, 636 Houston, and at one time Essex House, these are not new issues. They will continue to be problems in Tacoma Park. Systems, they become old. I mean, they have to be replaced, and it just seems like for-profit landlords can't do it or are unwilling to do it. Affordable housing, I think, is going to be one of the biggest issues for our region. Tacoma Park has always been a leader, but I think that we need to do more than discuss just pilots. We need to find out whether or not it makes sense for the county through our advocacy to give us money to maintain affordable housing in Tacoma Park, because these maintenance issues are not going to go away. And residents deserve the same quality of life in their housing that other members, residents of Tacoma Park have. Thank you.
And I want to add my voice and thanks to Montgomery Housing Partnership for continuing to invest in properties in Tacoma Park. I really appreciate the work that they do and their presence in this community. And I do want to note that we sometimes kind of joke about the fact that Tacoma Park is the affordable housing policy for Montgomery County, and it's disheartening to hear Montgomery County officials contend that they overinvest in affordable housing in the city. I do note that they are, that the county would continue to secure financing in this project up to 2.3 million, and appreciate that investment, and the state with a smaller amount, but I want to make sure that everybody recognizes that the county needs to continue to invest in properties such as this. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And when we do have a discussion of continuation of affordable housing in Tacoma Park, I would like to see MHP join us at the table to share their vast experience. And I'm especially interested in discussing how we can address the issues that we face with the smaller buildings. I know Montgomery Housing Partnership has found a model that works fiscally for some of the larger buildings that they've helped with here in Tacoma Park, but I think the smaller garden apartments present a different kind of challenge. So I think that needs to be a specific topic of our discussion. Thank you.
Remind me, did we move this one?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Yes, okay. So any further discussion? Okay, it's a first reading ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Four, first reading ordinance authorizing installation...
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Authorizing installation of traffic calming on 600 block of Boston Avenue. Ms. Breatwee, did you want to say anything on this one?
This is discussed at work session, previous meeting, and since then, I did have an opportunity to meet with several of the residents on site, per the suggestions. And so what you have in front of you is the, our recommendation on best path forward, which includes some changes to signage on the street, the addition of a speed hump and relocation of another, and then the opportunity to have an engineering firm evaluate a mid-block crossing, not a raised crosswalk, but a street-level crosswalk, and develop the possibility for making it compliant. So we have had, have had an engineering firm out on site, and they've done some mockups on the street to show residents where that possible mid-block crossing could be. So of course, that, the speed humps, providing we get to second reading with that, could be installed most likely this year. The additional work on the crosswalk, which include concrete work, would take place at a later time in the spring, providing funding was available through our traffic calming budget.
Thank you. Somebody like to move the ordinance?
I will. I will say, though, I didn't have any further comments from residents about this, except for one person who asked about county-style speed humps, and I couldn't find anything about them on the website. So I couldn't, I know I have a document somewhere, but I couldn't find it. So that's a website to do if it's not there already, and if it is there already, it's not findable. So I'm sorry, I moved it, yes.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Mail. Further discussion? Councilmember Mail.
So what is a county-style speed bump?
A county-style speed bump is a three-inch elevation and a smooth, smooth hump from side to side. They're 12 feet wide. They differ from the city speed bump in that the city speed bump can go up to four inches, and it's configured more like a hump on a bump. So it's, has a rise and then a mid-hump, and it's also 12 feet wide.
And are they rated for different speeds? Will that...
Yeah, the county speed bump is a 20 mile an hour speed bump, and the city speed bump is a five mile an hour speed bump.
So we would be changing the speed limit at this location from 25 to 20?
No, the signs themselves for the speed bump would indicate a 20 mile an hour speed limit, or speed over the speed bump.
No, what I mean is the speed on the block right now is 25?
I think most, if not all streets are 25.
And the speed on the existing speed bump is? Is it a county?
It's currently a city standard speed bump that's out there.
So it's a 25 mile an hour block with a current five mile an hour speed limit, and we'll be going to a 25 mile an hour block with two 20 mile an hour speed limit bumps?
Right, the mile per hours are more advisory, just what you can safely go over them for. It doesn't really, it's not something that somebody polices you about how fast you go over this speed bump.
And a reminder that if the street isn't signed, 25 speed limit is 30.
It's 30, yeah.
Councilmember, let's see, do you, any other comments? Okay, it's first reading ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
That was Councilmember Mail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Agenda Item Number Five is a first reading ordinance amending Chapter 11.2, Snow and Ice Regulations.
This is an item that we've discussed on numerous occasions. We finally have an ordinance in front of you to make the changes that you had identified in previous work session discussions. What this does is, first of all, clarifies the language, which really needed it. A second major item is that it keeps, it has a goal of keeping during daylight hours sidewalks free of snow. If it snows overnight, sidewalks are to be closed, are to be cleared by 8:00 a.m. If it snows through the daytime, they're to be cleared by 9:00 p.m. The, there's clarifications about you should clear the full width of the sidewalk unless there's a particularly difficult location, whereas you cannot easily clear the full width because of the configuration of the sidewalk. A typical example is when you have a retaining wall on one side and a curb on the other, and there's not a location to put snow, that in those cases, you must at least clear three feet wide width of pavement. It removes Maple Avenue as a snow emergency street. It allows us to have snow emergency streets in the future, but does remove Maple Avenue as listed snow emergency street. And it changes the fine structure to a graduated fine, where a first offense would be a $25, a second violation, I think doubles to 50, third violation then is a Class C offense, which is $200. And, and so we still have, Sue, the violation on commercial property, adjacent to commercial property would be $200 as well?
Yes, of course, the council might want to talk about that.
Right, so that's, that's something that really hasn't been discussed with the council.
I'm sorry, that's per snow event, is that right?
That's right.
In other words, if a commercial property would be treated differently than all our residential property?
But both apply, per snow event, so if you had a snowstorm that went on three days nonstop, that would be a single event, not, you wouldn't get a safety event.
Actually, there is something in the code that the repeat, you can have a repeat violation. Let's see, this is the exact language. Each day that a violation continues is a separate offense for which a citation may be issued. That's in the general part of the code concerning municipal infractions.
Right, and, you know, part of the goal here is that we don't want people just to wait till a whole snow event is over, especially if it's a multiple-day event. Then we have serious problems for getting around and things freeze, and you can never get it up.
So the goal is to get people shoveling daily if it's a multi-day event at a minimum?
And if I can get clarification, you were talking about circumstances where there's, where there would be less than the full width shoveled. You were talking about a wall on one side, a curb on the other, and I was thinking about in commercial areas where there's a building on one side and a curb on the other, and you're not supposed to throw it in the street, so where does it go?
Well, it still requires at least a three-foot wide clearance.
So that's another circumstance.
But they do say to clear, to try to clear as wide as possible. I mean, you don't want to have a 15-foot wide sidewalk in front of businesses and they just clear a three-foot wide path.
Okay, thank you.
The obligation doesn't vary between residential and commercial. The only thing that varies is the penalty.
Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to add, I think, one additional thing, if I might, which is we also added a provision that the city... a provision that the city, not necessarily that we would immediately do this, but we have the choice of writing a citation, ordering abatement, or ourselves cleaning the, clearing the snow ourselves, and charging back to the property owner who has failed to do it themselves.
Right, and we have had that before. We've had that previously, but it was written in very strange ways, that the police chief had to notice it and give the report, give the, the address to the Department of Public Works for them to clean it, and for the city clerk to send a bill. And that was much too specific for the kinds of ways that we handle things.
And of course, there's always the snow angels.
And there certainly are ways that we try to help those people who have difficulty clearing snow themselves for disability reasons.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Actually, that was just going to be my comment, that as much as possible, particularly, I'm still not on. There we go, now you're in. That the snow angels be publicized this winter, and I was wondering if this might be a December newsletter article?
Yes.
Or if it's not too late for December?
I think I've seen something already, but yes, can I make sure?
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
So, it occurs to me that, I've heard comments about the difficulty in getting the courts to enforce infractions for snow removal, because by the time it ends up in court, the snow has long since melted, and there's no longer any abatement that can be conceived of. And, and so therefore, it's difficult to get the court to act. And is that sort of preface question to my next question? Am I, make, is that accord with, am I understanding things, that this tends to be a difficulty?
Yes, I think it is more a structure that allows us to educate and persuade than to really go to court over, because you're right, the, the melting occurs before the judges hear the case.
Yeah, then also, but if that's, if, since that's apparently the case, it seems to me that the alternate of having this, if we've got a recalcitrant property owner who refuses to be, say, educated, and that the doing the, the shoveling and lean, putting a lien on the property avoids our having to go to court, and because we may not find the satisfaction, get the, the effect that we want, but then by putting, doing it ourselves, leaning, you know, cleaning it after we've lost, you know, we know we can't get this person to cooperate, that seems to be like a logical way for us to be conducting policy in order to get long-term results.
I think that's right, and a lot will be on us to do the proper documentation and to show that it was dangerous perhaps, or, you know, that there were consequences to the inaction. That would help.
You know, I think one of the issues here is that we don't have the staff or the money to do wide, wide-scale clearing in front of people's residences or businesses. We have a lot of work that gets, has to be done, clearing our own property and that kind of thing.
Okay, and so knowing that, we would just probably do this sort of thing?
We would do this unless...
Real, really difficult situation.
That's right, I mean, I think, you know, we've already identified important routes to schools, or some other key places where we would put the priority.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I just ask that, I support the changes, I'd ask that in April or May, we put it on the agenda and just say how did this year work? And if there are small changes that residents describe to us, or changes that we see, or city staffs do, see that we try to make them at that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to add one thing about the snow emergency declaration. I think the previous way the code was worded, it was very confusing. In fact, the state, upon approval of the county, does have the ability to declare snow emergencies for state roads in the city, but only that. All other roads, which of course are most of our streets, would be within the author, the authority of our city manager under this ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, this is a first reading ordinance. Did we move it? No, okay, does somebody want to move it?
Does that move?
Second.
Move by Councilmember Mail, second by Councilmember Stewart. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is our consent agenda. We have three items on it. The RC, RCN Cable Franchise Agreement, Resolution Support for the Tacoma Business Association Grant Applications, and a Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Purchase of Cameras for City TV. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Some move.
Go here, second.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Grimes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nope, 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 sorry, it's a roll call. Little court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye, here's the I R N A.
Yeah.
Okay, so that passes six to one.
What did we just vote on?
The consent agenda.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Okay, we will take a short break, and then we'll come back for a work session, discussion of library renovation proposal. So, we're now going to discuss the library renovation proposal.
Yes.
Ms. Ledlow?
We're, we're back again to talk about proposals for library renovation, and we have Greg Lukemeyer here from Lukemeyer Partnership. Greg, do you want to come on up? He's got a presentation, he'll go briefly over some of the things we've covered in the past, and then... past and then present a plan that shows an interior layout that I think meets the interests of council and staff. Greg, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice to see everybody again. We've made, I think, fairly good progress in responding to some of the concerns and issues that were raised last summer when we all met. And so, I'm going to very briefly go back over a couple of things just to reorient everybody as to where we were. What we've done, as you are well aware, is we worked with Ellen and her staff and others to prepare a space needs program for the library. We've gone through a whole series of alternative layouts and have gotten very good response from both the city as well as the library staff of what works, what doesn't work. So, we've probably been through perhaps eight to 10 different options of various ways. And those are always, that's always a good way of getting the best option, I think, is to explore what the possibilities are. And we've come to the point where we think collectively that there is a proposal that makes the most sense to respond to both library needs, site planning needs, urban design needs, and economics. We've addressed during the programming effort what makes a contemporary library. And I'm not going to go through this again, but quite frankly, as a community information center and as a community center, for all practical purposes, this is a well-used library and certainly will continue to be well-used. We have found, quite frankly, that when libraries are enhanced and renovated, that the circulation and the use of a library often goes way, way up. And one that we renovated a couple of years ago, it actually had a four-fold increase in the patronage of the library, simply because it was a more pleasant place to be, it offered new services, and it really became a center of community information. This is an earlier slide that came from the analysis that was done last January, or maybe the January before, in terms of things that folks in the community were looking for in a library. A summary of the space needs shows that you currently have about 9,400 square feet in the library, and we projected a need of a little over 14,000 square feet. That's a plus and a minus, and to be quite honest with you, as we design projects, the more efficient, the more flexible they are, the less square footage you need to accomplish some of the square footage requirements. So, this is an order of magnitude based on the number of printed materials that are in the collection, number of seats, computers, staff space, that's reasonable, gathering spots, quiet study areas. So, that's, that was the target, around a little over 14,000 square feet.
Okay. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Enid Hodes, oh, sorry, Enid Hodes, who is here, asked, made a remark before about the, what she saw as a decrease in the amount of stack space shelves. Do you have any kind of measure of, say, in linear feet of shelf space before and after?
Yes, yes. Yes, what we, the way we have calculated it is we've taken the number of volumes that are currently in the library. One assumes that a certain percentage is always out in circulation, and that's pretty standard, although from community to community, it can range anywhere from 10% to 40%. Children's areas have a lot more out at any one time. So, in this case, we took the total number of volumes, said 25% is going to be out in any time, and so, we've sized the shelving for 75% of the existing collection. So, if in fact there are more books out, there'll be more empty spaces on the shelves. If there's less books out, they're tighter on the shelves. So, that's a fairly standard way of establishing the linear feet of volumes based on a particular collection. We also know that most libraries are going through a weeding process, partly because when you realize that certain titles haven't circulated in a couple of years, you're going to kind of take them out, and they're no longer a part of your collection. So, that's an ongoing process. We've talked to Ellen a little bit about that. Your library's in the process of doing some weeding as well. And yet, I've heard loud and clear from the residents that this is a book lover's community, and quite frankly, there needs to be enough shelving and probably using the high shelving to make sure that there is enough capacity. But what I've illustrated on the documents is equivalent to what's existing today.
So, it's, the, I'm not sure, I followed you, but then when you said that, I'm not sure I did follow that last statement. So, the, just to go back for a second to your point about if there's less books in circulation, they're tighter, meaning literally they're pushed tighter on the shelf?
That's correct. That's correct. We usually, we usually...
Kind of like fitting into more modern chairs that aren't as wide?
That may be. Frankly, we size a book that are usually an inch, and all, all library ranges are 36 inches wide. And so, we count on 30 volumes per that range. So, there's already six inches left over in our calculation. So, there's some safety factors there, but it's silly to try to shelve every volume that you conceivably have.
And so, what you've done is kind of essentially said, okay, the linear shelf space that is currently available is kind of what you've designed for?
In effect. And to be quite frank with you and honest with you, I'd have to go back and count every shelf in the library. I've done it through the calculation of the collection that the library currently has.
But, but that's, that's kind of the intent of what's being laid out?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're not trying to shortchange the collection from any standpoint. So, interestingly enough, the exterior of your library is in pretty good shape. The roof is in good shape. You have your photovoltaics on the roof, windows were replaced some years ago, and so, it's a tight building. Don't seem to be any leaks. From the inside, you have a different story. It's, as you know, dated. There's some code issues, there are ADA issues, HVAC issues, lighting issues, and it's, as you know, it's kind of tired. But it's serviceable. So, if you start with where you are, as part of the, the library is connected to the community center, the exterior has a very strong character. I very purposely put this photograph of the original library. We can only find a black and white photograph. And it was a published building. It has a strong character, kind of mid-century modern, if you will. And I think it's important that whatever is done to the library, continue in the spirit of that library. So, I only show you these exterior shots because there are some elements of the library. It's a flat-roofed building. It's, does not wave its hands. In architectural speak, you might call it a background building, and yet, it's a very strong building in its own way. It has a wonderful setting. It has the, as you all are well aware, the mosaic on the end wall, and we'll talk about that in just a second. The existing conditions show that the library, the dark blue, these rooms are part of the library, although they are kind of halfway between the community center and the library. You have access that wraps around the building and goes in the front door from the parking lot. You have a secondary access that is sometimes open, that goes into, I'll call it, the octagon, from which you can then enter the library. I've been here sometimes when it's open and sometimes when it's not. And I did not show the third entrance, which is to the community center. In fact, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I parked, and I couldn't find out how to get into the building because it's hidden by the banana plants, and in fact, I couldn't find the door. I was sort of embarrassed. But it's something that we'll talk about as well. So, part of the issue is how the library can be expanded. You know, you've got the parking lots, you've got some major trees in the front, you've got the mosaic on the side, and this is something that we talked about previously. The existing library is pretty straightforward. It's an L shape, pretty traditional, with the library in one L, the adult in the other L, the staff in the between, and then kind of this no man's land that the library partially operates. There's a lot of circulation from the community center into the library and vice versa. So, there's, there's kind of a circulation pattern right through the middle of the, of the library. Issues that we have addressed as we've looked at options are, you know, how patrons get in, the ability to house the collection that we talked about, having sufficient seating, and very importantly, making sure that the staff can monitor what's going on in the library. I think that's very, very important in today's life. Oh, thank you very much. Oh, well, thank you.
I'm well prepared.
Now, I'm really well prepared. And obviously, this connection is very, very important, and we've gone back and forth and back and forth on how to make that work. This issue of impact on the landscape and the flood wall and the image from the street, all critical elements. These are a couple of options that you saw last summer. And if you remember, I can't remember whether it was in July or August, we all met one evening, and we laid these out through cones on the site. And there were ways of, we investigated simply renovating the library, expanding it toward Philadelphia Avenue, expanding it through the mosaic as well as toward Philadelphia. And here are some of the comments that I wrote down that I heard you folks say during that last work session, that this connection to the community is critical. We should really investigate new entrances from the library. If in fact it makes more sense to go directly from the parking lot into the library without going around it, we should take a look at that. Try to deal with that flood wall as part of the library. Is there a way of adding space to the library, perhaps by adding space in what I'll call the courtyard over here? That is one of the secondary entrances to the library. It seems to be quote "unused," although there's a stair that goes down to the police garage. Saving trees was really critical, making sure there's as good a setback from Philadelphia as possible, making sure people can see into the library and vice versa, when you're in the library, have a view to, in effect, the park-like setting that the library has. And if at all possible, find a way of expanding this library without moving the mural, which is an expense and it's suspect from the standpoint of the library. The one thing I heard more than anything else was flexibility. Let's create a library that has a lot of flexibility, that can adapt to future changes in the library world and the way in which people use a library and the way in which the library staff presents and provides programs to the community. You know, we're seeing more and more and more people using this, any library, to do job searches, for students to get together and do projects together, lifelong learning for seniors. There are people who show up at the library every day just to read the newspaper. I mean, it becomes a real focus, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I think it's really important. So, this whole notion of flexibility became very, very important. So, the concept that we have developed, and there's a reason for this kind of spotted drawing, and then I'll get to one that's not spotted, but the concept has been, that we think works best, is to frankly recognize the fact that people park in the parking lot to get to the library and to the community center. People do walk to the library from the sidewalk. They've never been able to get in directly past the flagpole because of the flood wall. It's a little frustrating.
I did it, I did it just this evening.
Oh, I'm sure, well, you jump over, right? But it certainly is not an encouraging message to, to come to the library. And so, we felt that by minimizing any expansion toward Philadelphia and toward the existing trees, we could really capture a significant amount of space in this courtyard over here and build out into it. We have investigated the stair that currently leads down into the garage. There is no exit sign, there is not a legal egress from the garage, and so, it really doesn't have to be there. And it's smack dab in the middle of that spot. We actually developed schemes that kept the stair and had a corridor that came out until we did more and more research and discussed it with staff here, that it is not a legal egress. So, it can be taken out very, very easily, or simply just filled in with gravel, quite maybe the least expensive thing to do. And we're proposing, frankly, to have the entrance to the library from the parking lot and to kind of repeat that same entrance into the community center, so that there's a notion of, here's the front door from the parking lot, both into the library and into the community center, and to forget about the secondary entrance into the library because it's, half the time it's not open anyway. And we can really use that space. There is right here where I'm pointing, a depression that goes down into mechanical space, so we've kept away from that. It becomes a light well, frankly. There are a couple of windows in these offices. So, the idea is to have the library, in effect, be this entire area, and to incorporate the seniors room at this corner, to straighten out the corridor so that you can come straight into the library. Your reception desk sits right up here for the community center, to be able to come straight into the library, but be able to close it off after hours, and to sort of expand it, and you walk into the library. These rooms, or this area would be staff, and I, now it's time for me to sort of go to the next slide, I'm sorry. So, the idea is that the library becomes this area in blue. And we've actually shown the floor plan of the community center up here. I'm going to go back one slide or two slides, because currently, as you know, you've kind of come around, well, actually, this is probably not really working very well. You're coming through the octagon, which is right about here. So, we've developed a scheme that you can sort of wrap around the core of the existing community center, entrance to the library, and really, everything you see in blue becomes essentially part of the library, with the exception of this corner room, which replaces the senior room that's here currently, and an office for somebody to work with the seniors. This L-shaped area becomes the staff. This becomes the program and meeting room. And this area, which still retains its L-shaped shape, is the library. You would enter here. There would be restrooms, circ desk, and I'll blow this up now so you can see a little bit better. You can come right in here. There are restrooms. If you're going directly to the meeting room, you go up a couple of steps or a ramp. There's a 10-inch difference in elevation between the community center and the library. And the meeting room could be here. Conceivably, there could even be a door to get in for after-hours, but we see this as a glass wall. There's storage in here. Library materials come directly from the outside, and library staff has all workstations, an office, a small conference room, and a restroom for them. But basically, then, the patron, the public access area is the rest of the building, with adults, with children, with quiet study, some of which can be reached from the public area, or the adult area, some from the children's area. I'll blow it up a little bit more so you can see it a little bit better. This entire area is roughly 14,500 square feet. I've taken out about 550 square feet for the seniors and the senior office. So, the remainder is about 14,500, which coincidentally matches pretty close to the need that we initially said the library had. But one comes in from the community center, either down a ramp, around a little planter, or down a couple of steps. This is the young adult area with a view to the outside. Children's area, kind of an area for computers and sort of getting your bearings. One of the things we've... One of the things we've done is we have moved or enclosed that outside, I'll call porch area. We've simply moved the glass to the line of columns that is there currently to enable us to come directly into the library. This corridor ranges from eight feet to 12 feet, and then there are computer rooms and a computer room office that can interact with folks using the computer. So from a layout standpoint, there's a lot of flexibility. There are some existing columns, but they really work well. We have not touched the mosaic. The existing library stops right where my cursor is right here. I'm not sure why, whoa, sorry. Right where the cursor is. So this is the piece that's added, just this little square, same little square there.
And can you identify what's on that wall that you were just pointing to, like the inside of the mosaic wall? Those, is that shelving?
This is shelving on the inside of the mosaic wall. If you remember, the library has very high windows. It's a solid wall up to high windows. So we've taken advantage of those walls and where there's the high walls and high windows, we have lined it with shelving, just the way it is today.
Right, so that when people are looking this and at this and maybe thinking that the shelving is only the things out in the middle, there's a lot of places where the perimeter has the shelving.
Yes, in fact, these are, this is shelving. There'd be some shelving in here, there's shelving all along this area, all because it's a high wall.
And just one other quick observation.
Yes, sir.
Can you speak to the point where you filled in the piece that...
This piece right here.
No, the corridor from where the reception desk is.
On the right.
On the right hand, on the entrance area.
I feel like I can point on the screen, but that won't help you.
I understand.
The ramp past the computer rooms.
This right here.
Yeah.
Where you filled that in on the outside, the gray area.
I'm going to go back. See this little yellow area right here?
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm trying to figure out is that you've ended up with a perimeter space around the outside that is kind of cut off or a dead end. What is that?
That's what currently is.
It is, it is what it is, but there's no real access to it.
I'm not sure what this dead end is.
Past the mosaic, just with the walkway outside.
Oh, this, oh, yes.
Yeah, I think there's a, one of the things that we'll be getting to, I hope, is some kind of discussion about some of those kinds of areas, both in the recreation department area and then in that kind of, in that general area about how we deal with landscaping or what we do in those spaces. We're not to that point yet, and I think some community discussion makes some sense.
Okay, I didn't want to get sidetracked, but I just thought.
No, currently, you're absolutely right. You could actually walk from where my cursor is down this way, down here.
But you can't go, you can't go out here.
You can't go outside in any case. We have retained the ability to go outside here. This could be an outdoor area outside this conference room. You could actually set up a table or two during nice weather. But currently, although you can walk down here and get here, you can't really get out. Right now, you can because it keeps going. But one of the goals here and one of the byproducts of coming in from the parking lot is that the current flood wall is about 20 inches high, and then it sort of goes this way and it ends up at about a foot high. And so by moving the entrance over here and not having any openings on this side of the library for the floodwater to get in, the first two feet or 18 inches of the library can be a solid wall, and so you don't necessarily have a wall outside the wall. The library wall itself becomes the boat, if you will.
What seems obvious, which means it probably isn't, is so you, that L shape, the inverted L shape that's orphaned here, I guess that is a flood wall. Yeah, so you can't just remove that and turn that into a grassy area.
To be quite honest with you, we would have to investigate that a little bit more.
Well, I mean, the wall with the mosaic properly wouldn't have the right properties to serve as a flood wall the way that the new wall toward Philadelphia that you're describing would serve as a flood wall.
Conceivably, you're correct, because I, and yet, I mean, the existing building, for which we don't have any drawings, is a masonry building. So the flood wall, as you know, is a poured concrete wall, which is obviously less porous than a brick wall. So you're probably right.
I mean, I suppose in principle, although who knows how much it costs, it would cost, you could replace the underpinning under the wall where the mosaic is. I note that right now, there's a community garden underneath where it says Transformer.
That's correct.
So, you know, I'm sure that those space-hungry community garden people would love to have more space, for instance.
It is possible, and that's something that certainly could be investigated. You're absolutely right.
While we're on that, I have, I'm just not on again. I have a question about the L shape, the short part of it. Would there be any use in actually punching out more there?
In here?
So that is actually, yeah, so.
No, the top part.
The top part.
The top part.
Right here, yeah, that area.
To be honest with you, it would be fairly expensive to take down or put a big hole in the brick wall, but yes, it could, it could be done, yes. It would just add a little bit of money. But absolutely.
I mean, we could just put a door.
Yes, yes. One of the things we've tried to do is to actually define an area for young adults where they can study, there are some computers, there are some comfortable seating, there is some shelving to give them their space that is obviously observable by the staff at the circ desk. It's always important to make sure. And we have found over and over again that particularly when there is a finite number of computers and they're sort of in the same area, the kids will take them over and often older people don't then want to use them. So most libraries today are trying to define some area for young adults and really encourage the reading and using the library.
A quick comment. I realize that anything that isn't a wall is eminently changeable, but all the same. In the children's area, you have the two tables at the top there.
Here?
And the children, yes, no.
No, inside the.
Inside. The current children's area is used for various kinds of programming where there are loads of kids sitting around. And if you were to move those five stacks up and move the tables to below the stacks, presumably those wouldn't be fixed tables, they could be moved to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, you get the point.
Absolutely. And I'll be very honest with you, we have furnished the library with shelving and tables and chairs so that people could understand scale.
This is an illustration at this moment.
And illustrate how it could be laid out. There are other ways. In fact, initially, all these shelves went the other way, and Ellen made the comment, good comment. Gee, if they went this way, we can see through them better, and if this is a glass wall, we can, you know, see that it's, we're not blocked by the shelving. So very simple to do that. I mean, it's, it's an illustration of a possibility.
One of the things that the library has asked for for some time, and this plan shows, is that the program space that's up here is a, is a way to accommodate a lot of the children's programs without precluding other people from using the actual children's room.
So you could have, and you could use this room for all kinds of purposes, from a lecture to a poetry reading, to a musical event, to a film series. So it's not something that then the staff would have to move all the shelving out of the way, which they have to do today. It would be set up for, as a multipurpose room, to be quite honest with you.
And it can be used also for studies, that you could put tables and stuff in it.
How much additional storage does this proposal capture for the library?
When you say storage?
Storage for books that they may want to put on the shelves, may want to sell, and they do their big.
It provides, to be quite honest, it provides space in the staff area for that. We've not really worked on exactly where it might be. There is a storage room right here that's longer-term storage. This area in here is for gift books and, you know, receiving and that sort of thing. If you go into the library today, you'll see books are just, and.
Right, they're just all over the place.
Right. So part of the goal here is to organize the chaos and to give everybody a place to call their own. And while we have identified the number of staff, you know, it could be that we don't need quite this number of workstations. You also see a countertop. A lot of library staff work at counters because they're often on the floor. So, yeah, it will add considerable amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. I am especially struck by how you listened to us last time and incorporated many of those things into your upgrade of the concept plan. I had one question, looking at the floor plan you have on the screen right now. I'm wondering how that space for the two computer rooms compares to the space that's available now, and both in square feet and in number of computers.
Yeah, the number of computers is the same. The square feet in one room is pretty close to exactly what you have today. The other one is a little bit smaller, but in looking at how it's used, I think there's some extra space frankly, and that could be used better. The idea here is that these are glass walls, and so you're not kind of walking by a, down a corridor, but because these are glass, you can see in and that, that space is expanded and the staff can see back into these rooms as well. So right now, you have to go out into the octagon and then look into each one of the rooms. So part of what we're trying to do here is to make the entire library visually open, both for staff and for patronage, so that nobody's afraid to go anywhere and people understand how the library is laid out. They don't have to go to the staff always and say, how do I find something? Now, we've also, because we, you know, it's, this is kind of a funny shape to a certain extent. How does this relate to the existing library and how does it relate to the street? So we've prepared some very quick sketches to give you an idea of how this might generate into the building. I warn you, we have not drawn all the photovoltaics on the roof. So this is a, kind of an aerial looking this way, illustrating perhaps canopy coming out for the new library. This is the expansion area for, into the courtyard, perhaps another canopy into the community center. The existing library ends right about here. These are the high windows in the bathroom, and we have basically begun to add more glass. Looking from the other side, here is the mosaic, which stops right here. And we played with different colors and materials, and we've continued the brick to the corner, but because this is such a light color, we've continued the light color. You can see very, in the background, the enclosure of that porch, if you will. We have located the trees where they are today. If I'm down, walking across the street on Philadelphia Avenue, here is your mosaic. And basically, we have made as much of this glass as possible and yet framed it all in brick, kept the same roof line that simply came out. There seemed to be no reason to pop it up for any particular reason. None of the spaces are big enough to sort of define with a roof that pops up, although frankly, we could look at that sort of thing. So this is a very modest way of expanding the existing aesthetic. Just a little closer view, there's the flood wall. If one were to come from the parking lot into the library, we've, you can barely see it here, but we've taken this wall that's adjacent to the restrooms and sort of pulled it out as a stone wall. Perhaps that's where the name of the library would be with some lighting, a glass vestibule, simply both for energy efficiency as well as so you can see into the front. This is the corner of the children's area. A closer view of that wall kind of coming out and the entrance. Looking back the other way with the community center with its canopy, if you will, just a notation that here's a front door, if you will. A view of the infill, this is what this looks like today, except that you just have columns and the glass is pushed back about eight feet. We've simply pulled the glass to the face of the columns and you can see the mosaic wall here once again. So we're not trying to disturb that in any way. So those become some ideas of three dimensions to give you a sense of what the library might look like based on the program and the, the shape of the floor plan that's been presented.
One of the things with showing the windows like this, the thing that's deceptive here and the difference is that you'll be able to see in, see people sitting in the chairs, see the books. I mean, I think that's kind of an exciting thing about being able to, to make it seem even more approachable and you know what it is by looking in.
Yeah, and in the evening, I think people will find it. I've driven by the library a couple of times, missing it almost, but it becomes a little bit of a lantern without disturbing hopefully residents across the street. But this is absolutely correct, and there's some issue of marketing of a library and what's inside, and also getting people excited to come in and actually use it.
Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Grimes.
Yeah, I'm overall pleased with, with the solutions that you've come up with for, with the entrance off of the parking lot. But I'm not too pleased with the view from Philadelphia Avenue that we're looking at right here. I mean, in most cases, I guess, I'd think, oh, gosh, more glass is better than less glass because we want everybody to, on the outside, to be able to see in and enjoy, you know, bring nature inside and all that kind of stuff. But we're dealing with books here and wall space for, for walls. I guess, on the one hand, I think we should have, we can, can have windows and lots of them, but it seems to me that shelf space is a lot more valuable than daylight. We don't have to have 100% daylight. We could have some of these walls 50% daylight and 50% walls. The other thing that I'm unhappy about is that whole south side, because where the flagpole is, is kind of a dead zone. There's, I mean, you, there's, you don't, you can't, there's no doors on that side. And we know why. You've explained that that makes all the sense in the world. But it, there, it just becomes an area where no one will ever go because nobody's going to go and say, oh, let's walk around the flagpole two times. That might be an absolutely fantastic spot for the fountain that we've been thinking about. It's going to allow us to do all kinds of things.
Well, to be honest with you, I'd probably move the flagpole closer to the front door.
Yeah, something like that. I just.
And use that.
I'd like us to sort of have a way of making that, that green space there something that isn't just a place that becomes something you look at.
I think that's a, it's a good observation. I totally agree with you.
Yeah, and I, as I said, I'd like to, with all that linear wall space and to not have it be able, some of it to be able to be used for shelf space, just seems like a lost opportunity.
One of the things we have not addressed, because, you know, I'm always a little bit nervous about sticking my big toe in this one, is to create an outdoor area for the library. If I go back a couple of slides, that conceivably, there could be a reading patio, there could be doors particularly from the children's area, because it's the south side, and it could be incorporated into the library. Or it could simply be landscaped to simply set the building more in landscape. So I think there, there are options, and I think your observation is spot on.
So to start with what you just said, if you were to do some kind of exterior area
in that corner there now, I mean, you have the problem with the flood wall.
Right.
It would become a flood wall. In fact, you would make.
You'd have to go up and then down.
It would have to be up high.
Yes, it would have to be up, you know.
So I'll come back to that. I'll say, you know, someone else observed this earlier. You've, you've done what we asked you to in the last sessions, so that's really good. And this is really shaping up very nicely, I think. I finally, last weekend, visited the new Silver Spring Library, which I guess you designed.
Yes.
And I remarked that five to 5:30 Saturday afternoon, it was closing at six. There were loads of people in there using it as community space. A lot of people sitting around with electronics, using the library's computers or using their own electronics, and, you know, a lot of people using the library's collections as well. So I think that's to be expected and in keeping with the thought that we're looking for a space that's going to be flexible and really serve people with varying types of needs. With the Silver Spring Library, there are big, big windows with, since the library's on the third to fifth floor of that building. on the third to fifth floor of that building, with some great views of round Silver Spring. And I think that the light that those huge windows brought in was really, really, made the interior much more attractive and much more hospitable to people who just want to sit around and read or do whatever they're doing to do in there. And I noted also the, let's call it the diversity of the people, just by looking at them who were in that space. So, these are all good signals for what we're doing, and so, I'm really glad we are where we are. I noted the number of meeting and study rooms in that library that were available for people to reserve online and so on, and I know that we have meeting space crunch here in our community facilities sometimes. So, in any case, I do see that you have seating, again, this is, as we discussed a few minutes ago, things that can be changed. You do have seedings around the perimeter, and that is in the Silver Spring Library as well. And again, people like sitting there, looking out those big windows. They would like looking out the windows that you're going to be including here according to this design. So, you did say earlier that the amount of shelf space for books, for the collection, is roughly comparable to what we have now.
Correct.
I did, I did observe a number of design quirks in Silver Spring. To me, it seems strange that the library's on the third to fifth stories rather than on the ground floor. I don't know who made that decision. But, that actually does relate to our current, or rather, to the Tacoma Park Library Plan, the removal of the entrance from Philadelphia Avenue, even though it is inaccessible because of that flood wall, to most people at least. Yet, you know, going up to the third floor, having to go around the side of the building to get in, to me, these are impediments to use by people who are walking around. There were some other design flaws, and this is probably something frankly that you should have anticipated. I noted that there were huge I-beams that were holding up the roof. They were diagonal, and they all had paper signs on them saying, "Don't climb on these because it's inviting to climb on them." And then further, they were I-beams, so they go like this, and they had what looked like the, those swimming pool noodles.
Swimming pool, yeah.
With, you know, because people were banging their heads probably on them. And then there's also exposed electrical outlets there up in the kids' room. So, we should be careful about these kinds of design elements. You're not going to have I-beams on the interior because there's no second story or anything like that, but, so, I'll, that's, that's by way of saying, yeah, we need to be careful with the design elements as we get them in there. But, overall, this looks really good. Thank you.
You might be interested to know that those beams up on the top floor, the building is hung from the top. It doesn't hold up the roof, it holds up the whole building.
Yeah.
Because there was no, the county did not want any columns under it because of the purple line. And so, in effect, the core of that building goes up, and on the fifth floor, you have these gigantic trusses, and the building is actually hung from there. So, the day they kind of said, "All right, let it go," that was an exciting day.
The one, the one element that is connected to the library that is on the ground level is the Kefa Cafe outlet there.
Right.
And, you know, it's nice to have something like that in the building. I know that over the years, we've discussed whether there could be some kind of coffee, pastry, whatever, sandwich kiosk in our space. You know, it's something to consider going forward, but it can be done flexibly via food trucks and all that if it ever, you know, that's, that's not something to be resolved now, but it also adds to the allure of the space.
Yeah, the first two floors were intended to be for Pyramid Atlantic, but they've had a, I'll call it a falling out with the county.
Yeah. Well, there are other uses. I don't know whether they're signed yet, so I won't say what I know about it.
The Levine School of Music is going to move in on the second floor, apparently. I've just heard that.
What was that?
The Levine-
The Levine School of Music.
There's a, there's another program that's slated to move in, but I don't know whether it's signed yet. You wouldn't know who they are, having to do with it. It's youth programming.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, and thank you for this. I disagree with my colleagues that it's like a lot of work went into this since the last time we talked, and I've also been at the Silver Spring Library actually a number of times since it opened this summer, and I like to just agree with Councilmember Grimes, the light in the Silver Spring Library is wonderful. And I think also the way the windows are and then that you can sit at the base of the windows, and people, what I notice are the nooks and crannies in that library and how people are curled up or finding a space, older people and young people and children. And I would hate to lose that for more shelf space. I think if we can accommodate the collection and the books we have now, and I trust our librarian to be able to make those calls, I would actually like to see as much light as possible in these areas where, as I said, these sort of nooks and crannies. In addition, as Councilmember Schultz talked about, the, what he called a kind of a dead zone around the, the flagpole, I'd like to say, like, at the moment, the way the library is used, that is almost the opposite of a dead zone. That is a vibrant area where there are always kids. It's a park, basically, and moving the entrance will change that. But, I, if we could give some thought to how that's used right now by the children and if there is an outdoor space, I think that would be wonderful, because right now, that, kids dump their book, book bags right up on the wall and they're sprawled there from, I would say, I mean, Ellen would know this better, from the time school gets out until well past, you know, seven, eight o'clock at night. So, it would be great if we could keep that going. I think it's a vibrant area. Thank you.
And with the discussion about the windows and the new wall that would be incorporating the flood wall, and what Councilmember Stewart mentioned about the seating at the bottom, at the base of the windows, I'm assuming that you'd get most of the light if the bottom of the windows comes up, I don't know, to like three feet or something like that, so that you still get the benefit of all the light, but potentially some storage or some other use around the edge of the bottom.
Yes. And we often take advantage of that, particularly in children's areas where you put book bins and smaller shelving because of the windowsill may be about two feet tall, and let's face it, kids like to sit on the floor and, and read the books anyway. So, it works great in, particularly in the children's area. And for adult areas, often, we look at something like that for periodicals, because people like to come in, find a comfortable seat, look at magazines or newspapers, and so, they can actually be stored in lower areas as well.
And just to follow up on Councilmember Stewart's observation about the outdoor use there, I'll say that I also have recognized that use there, which drives me to park my vehicle away from there, tossing a football because I don't want it landing on my vehicle. So, anything that moves that use a little bit more toward that flagpole area would probably be good. And Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. I think we should put a fence around that area with the flagpole, and we should have a dog library there. No, I think that the, the use as outdoor space works and could potentially work even with the entrance going away. I think people, people just simply are attracted to green open space that's within walking distance of three schools essentially.
Right.
I'm a little concerned about the library entrance space taking up multiple parking spaces, and just a note to the city manager, that I guess in my time on council, I've noticed that it seems like more city vehicles taking up more of what used to be spaces that seem like they're available to the public, especially down below. So, I guess I just worry about us having more city vehicles and giving up what could be three space, what looks like three spaces here and three spaces at the other entrance closer to this end. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just want sort of a parking analysis to understand that better. I'm, I'm still curious about the lightwell mechanical space between the, I think what is the generator and what you have labeled here as the lounge. And I, and I guess my specific interest and concern is whether that creates an additional heating and cooling cost for the building that is less sustainable than if we didn't have that additional exterior wall space. And I think to the question about glass and the extent of glass, I generally support the, the concepts of having more glass, more light, but I think it would just be helpful to have a, a realistic assessment of, if you can't put stacks along the walls, how much book storage space is there? And if it looks like we're going to get pretty much the exact same, then that's good to know, and if it looks like we're going to get less, that's good to know. And that could help us figure out the right balance of glass. Thank you.
I think, happy to hear about the comments of glass, because quite frankly, today probably was the first time that anybody had seen any of these quote renderings.
Yeah, the outside ones are new to us.
So, you know, I felt that it was important to share basically that, you know, the box gets bigger and what might be the kind of shape and what is solid and what is void. So, there's, this is a, you know, trial balloon and throw it over the fence, but I think it's generated some good discussion, and I think you're absolutely right, there's a balance between glass and usable space and, but we want to make sure this is a fairly thick building, so you want to try to get light as far deep into the building as possible. And you're right, people like to sit near windows, so I think that working with, with Ellen, to make sure that there's the appropriate number of seats and shelving is important. One thing I'd like to point out with the entrance, we're finding more and more people who either get dropped off at a public building where they're waiting for a parent or a caregiver to pick them up from a building. There's some real advantage to being able to have a cup, a bench or something and wait and then come out and get picked up by, as I said, a parent or a caregiver. So, that visual connection between, you know, kids particularly, you know, go out and meet your mother, but nobody can monitor what's going on, is a very helpful byproduct of moving the entrance from around the corner to, to where it is here. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Just an additional comment, that one of the things that's so limiting in many of our spaces right now are outlets. Most people have electronics, as Councilmember Grimes mentioned, and there's no place to charge them.
Right.
And so, to me, doing, and this is more, less of an architecture issue and more of a mechanical issue, but designing space, designing exterior walls, so that there's plentiful outlets all along the walls, so that people can be spread out and take advantage of the opportunity to-
Absolutely.
-use that.
Since many of us have stated our opinions about the glass, I would just like to be clear, I think more glass is better. I like the, the glass you've suggested in this concept. I worry a little bit with the glare from the outside light on computer screens, and so we would have to make sure to take that in consideration with the design.
I agree.
Councilmember Schultz.
I guess I'm Darth Vader, I like the darkness. No, I'm just, I'm being silly. I, you know, I, with regard to getting, that, that large room is so deep, and we do want to get light, as much natural light. So, is there any sense to even thinking about creating some clear story along the, that bottom edge of the, or, what are we talking about, the southern edge of the building?
Yes and no.
You know, one of, one of the options I heard, and I don't know if this is feasible-
Yeah.
-but above the planter where the ramp is coming in off the hallway, that could be a really nice place if we had, if this were kind of a, a nice planting area with plants kind of going up a brick wall or something, and having some light come in there might, might be very attractive and, and kind of get to that, get to more of a center place.
One of the things I was talking about, the, this yellow area, which is the addition area-
Right.
-is not so large that you might pop it up because it's going to define a specific area, but it could be investigated to do a clear story or something. If you go back and look at the aerial of the building, here's the mosaic wall, and you really, really filled up the roof with photovoltaic, so, you know, otherwise, we might suggest a clear story or skylight or something. So, we're really having to deal with the edges right now. But, you know, I think that that's a good, it's something that ought to be explored.
A couple other thoughts. I support your, your, your library main entrance design, not just for the reasons you just cited, but also for people who are disabled, that being able to get into a covered spot and then, then move through the door, the doors, and then move through the second doors if you're handicapped in some sort of a way, that's a really nice way to be able to take the time you need if it's inclement or cold windy weather to do that, if you're stuck in a wheelchair or something of that nature. And I'm really, really intrigued, most of all, by the program space, because we have this space here, we have the azalea room across the way, and then some small meeting rooms which are somewhat functional. But, this space looks like it could be something different than anything we have in the community center, that we're audiovisual programs, music, movies could be done or stuff like that, and, and I'm thrilled with the idea that, you know, for, for, for small lecture space, we won't need this whole big space for things. It would be probably a room about a fourth the size of this one. It could be, so as much of that space as you can squeeze out, I think would be terrific. And the only last thing I would say is that I'd like to see some glass display spaces along the walls where we, we have people that do, we'd like to display art in our community center. So, that would be additional spaces for art display or for stuff that have been made by students in the crafts programs, or for city mementos, trophies, plaques-
Sure.
-bowls, things like that. Those can be tucked in, you know, they don't need to be big design features, but something to keep in mind.
Good, that's a good suggestion.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say, I really appreciate you and your team taking the comments that we had the last time we met and incorporating them in this new proposal. I really like the things that you're doing with the space that we have now with the computer room and the senior room. It doesn't really work well with the current library, bringing that into a new space so, you know, they're, they're not like a stepchild.
Right.
It's, it's all one area. I think that's really good. I would like to say that I do like the windows. I think it's really nice when people can, that are walking by can see people in the library, and also when you are using the library, it doesn't matter what capacity, reading a book or using your iPad, that you can look outside is, is really nice. So, thank you, and I look forward to, to the new drawings that you're going to bring after you incorporate some of my colleagues and my comments. Thank you.
And I'll piggyback one quick comment on Councilmember Mail's observation about places to plug in to charge things. It would also be good to keep in mind being able to charge something outside like a vehicle.
No.
I know Councilmember Grimes doesn't want to hear that, but other people have expressed support for-
People pay for it.
It could be arranged however, but if there were something, just keeping in mind in terms of electrical needs, that that's a good opportunity to say, "Okay, there's potential vehicle charging."
And I think that's important, that, one of the things I heard early on here was that this needs to be a lead building, it needs to be a sustainable building. So, we have not forgotten that, and I think the things that we're trying to do will help to make it a lead building, including perhaps charging station, even if they're coin operated.
And I, and I thought of that because I've ordered a plug-in vehicle.
There you go.
And, and I just want to add my thanks for the, the work that you've done in this iteration. I think it's, it's a big leap forward and makes things a lot more real.
Good, good.
I'd like to follow just on two things. One is, I'm going to go a little bit off topic, and if you can show the, where the recreation department is, the area where the recreation department is, the bathrooms next, between the department and the game room, that area is really crummy. And the, the walkway has this funny, is narrow and has a funny jog from the, kind of the main entrance. One of the things that, after we started looking at this, started to think that, you know, I'd love to square off where the one office kind of juts into the hallway, make that so it's a, it's a wider, more friendly thing, upgrade the toilet rooms. One of the, one of the points that the architect has, has mentioned is that we probably do not make, we probably do not meet code for the number of bathrooms. not make, we probably do not meet code for the number of bathrooms that are in this facility. So we can't lose them certainly, and if we have an opportunity to, to upgrade them, that would be useful. That wouldn't be part of the library project, but one of the things that, as we look at this, there may be some relatively minor changes that we can make at the same time that make the whole place work better and, and bring some things up to a more attractive, a more attractive condition for all of us. In terms of next steps, we would like to be able to take this kind of public, have some public meetings, especially explain what this proposal is and talk particularly about kind of the outside parts of this, which we've not spent time on because we wanted to make sure that the facility functioned and met the, the requirements that had been laid out in the program of requirements and those that you had indicated in, in our previous meetings. So I think, to me, you know, I just propose allowing a, a couple of public meetings where we talk this out in some different ways, open to your ideas about how to do that best. But I'd like to be able to get that, get it over the next couple of months finalized and then, and then move into detailed design. Do you want to speak a little bit about magnitude of cost here? So we just have some clue going into it, but recognizing that until we get a little more detail, we're not going to have a, a cost figure?
Yeah, we've done a very broad brush order of magnitude costs, including the canopies and the infill and, and adding on and renovating the library. And we've come up with a construction cost of someplace between three and three and a half million dollars. It's equivalent to, when you think about a little over $200 a square foot, the library is around, or the, everything we're touching, let's say, is around 14,500 square feet. If you round it up to 15,000 square feet, multiply it by $200 a square foot, you're going to get around 300, 3, 3 million dollars. The renovation of the existing library is obviously less expensive than, than the construction of, of additions to it. And that's strictly construction costs, it doesn't include quote soft costs that could include everything from furnishings to construction contingency to testing or, you know, for, during construction or fees and that sort of thing. So there is a, a figure that you need to add to create a project cost in addition to the-
Hence you're talking four million something?
Probably, probably in that range. I've just estimated two days ago a library, not too similar from here, down on the eastern shore, and they're looking at renovating and adding to an 11,000 square foot library in a little neo-Georgian building, or moving into a grocery store, abandoned grocery store of 15,000 square feet. And the numbers are not dissimilar, to be honest with you. We did a very detailed estimate there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we're adjourned and we're out by 10.
Thank you.
You bet.